I'll call this meeting over.
I'll call.
Clark McLaren.
Here.
Larry Watson.
Here.
Billy Cloud.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four recognized guest, we want to thank Oliver again for being here today. Item number five is signed across the National Community Education. We have them here.
Make motion to sound.
I'll say.
Martin McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Okay, item number six is no business. Been dominating the business now. Claire?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Not any new business. I thought I was gonna have a new contract for you guys to sign. I'm waiting on Cherokee Nation. I've been doing some negotiations with them, the Choctaws, and negotiated with Cherokee Nation to go up to sixty-four dollars a day in housing their inmates.
Good.
And they're supposed to email me a contract this morning. I'm still waiting on it, so... But it goes into effect April first, which is next Monday. And I don't know if I need to get you guys to approve that or bring it in or can we just wait and start Monday?
Well, I probably need to approve it and then bring the contract later.
Okay.
Is there any big changes other than that? How much does that go up per day?
Ten dollars.
So fifty-four.
So it's going from fifty-four to sixty-four.
When is the first?
It's next Monday.
We could approve it Monday.
Okay.
Be good to go.
Also been talking to the Choctaws. They're talking about building a new jail and they're going to build a new courthouse in McAllister. So I'm not really trying to negotiate anything with them other than I told them we'd transport their medical and stuff like that here and they wouldn't have to send somebody up from Durant or wherever. They're gonna pay us mileage and hourly to do that. So we'll get all of that in this area.
Where's the jail supposed to be?
They're just talking about it right now, so... Some of them think it's just talk.
Yeah, hope so.
I've got sixty Choctaws right now and seventy Cherokee's.
Probably take it a while to come to fruition anyway, even if they do it.
Yeah. Yeah, it... Maybe it won't be in our lifetime.
Did you say seven or seven Cherokees?
I've got seven Cherokees.
Seven, okay.
Sixty Choctaws, ninety-one total with ours and everything.
So probably just to have Randy go ahead and put it on next week's agenda. Yep, please. Christie, you got anything?
Nope, I don't have anything today.
Nothing today? How about you, Holly?
No.
All right. No other new business, but moving on. Item number seven approved.
Make motion to approve.
I'll say.
Clark McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Item number eight, approved blanket POs. Do we have any?
No.
No waxing on eight. We have no blanket POs today. Item number nine, review and silence approved. Tascow County District two disaster recovery plan.
Make motion to approve.
I'll say.
Clark McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item TM review and sound approved. Cooperative extension agreement of Umsky University Extension Service to United States of California.
Did you save it?
I have not. Looks like just the standard agreement for a physical year.
Just three different copies of the same one.
Three copies of it.
I make motion to approve.
I'll say.
Clark McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Okay, moving on out and land and discuss consider Heskey County District three going after bids on a used tractor.
Make motion to approve.
I'll say.
Clark McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Item number twelve, discuss consider Heskey County District three appointing new exercise board members. How about you, man?
Yeah.
All right, I'll say.
Clark McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Do we know what we've opened this guy up for when he gets on the... I want him on the board. I want him on the exercise board, but since he does business with the county, though, I mean, the statute real clear about it. I just don't, before he accepts it, I wanna make sure he understands what it is and I'm not against him at all. We need a good board member. But since he does do drug testing through his company, I feel that that's gonna be a conflict.
Well, we do have other conflicts of interest on it too.
On the board?
Yes.
What's that?
Well, we do business to bank.
Oh, yeah. But the bank owner doesn't... Bank owner's not on the exercise board.
Yeah, but you're still doing business as president. But anyway, I don't...
No, no, no. I want him on it, but it... You see, we got a conflict.
He mentioned that, but...
But he's good with it? He accepts the liability?
Yes, sir.
Well, I vote yes, and if he wants it, you bet.
Billy Cloud.
Did you ask me?
I thought I asked you.
Okay, yes.
Did I not?
I forgot. You probably did.
Yes.
Okay, item number thirteen, discuss consider type post-escalation of post-escalation. Holly, you got some information on that?
Uh, yes, and I have a resolution that we're sending through. This is the best case scenario honestly possible. Central National Bank is gonna allow us to take a partial withdrawal so that we don't have to take out that full CD and we don't lose all the interest. It is gonna cost us about six hundred and eleven dollars for the penalty for a partial early withdrawal. Um, but we need a hundred thousand to complete paying off the Bank First loan. I had enough from the collections for everything else.
Okay.
So we'll be square with Bank First on we're done?
Yes, and as long as Randy can get me those minutes today, I can go over, withdraw that hundred thousand, get it deposited in the gross revenue bond because Bank First is wanting to debit that in the morning. She needs three days. Friday is a holiday. So that's our goal.
You said you were withdrawing one hundred thousand dollars. Is that right? And a six hundred and eleven dollar penalty.
Yes, the hundred thousand dollars is what the withdrawal will be. The penalty will come out of that. I have enough money in the account to offset that penalty. It was just easier to let her go ahead and do it for that even amount of money. Otherwise, it was the next bracket of penalty. So this saves us a little money.
So this is prob... This sounds like the best scenario.
Yes, by far.
Because this is coming out of the CD that doesn't renew until August, right?
Correct, August fourteenth.
I make motion to approve.
How much interest are we gonna get when this is all paid off? Do you have a...
As far as on the...
The whole thing?
At Bank First or at CMB?
Both, together.
Okay, so on Bank First, the amount of interest that accumulated on that was around sixty thousand dollars on that little bit... On the forty-two thousand that was left.
Yeah.
It became sixty thousand dollars. All that I'm having them roll into the payoff, which is why we're only having to borrow the hundred thousand off of that two hundred and thirty-three. It's approximately two hundred and thirty-four thousand right now at CMB. Few dollars shy. Um...
Will they release that before we have this audit done on this next item?
Yes.
They will?
Yeah. The audit is the final. After it's paid off is when this is done on the next item.
Well, I'm glad that's done.
Yes.
That's been... That's been pretty bad.
Yes.
Clark McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
The actual payoff on that... The actual payoff on that full loan to Bank First is four hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Um, by the time they took this, the payments that we had already paid, the interest, all of that, it still left us three hundred eighty-nine, four forty-two, fifty-five. And out of the first CD and what I had from collections, I paid all of it, but a hundred thousand previous.
Yeah, sounds good. Glad we get that.
I thought the loan was just four hundred and fifty and we never pulled all of it out.
Correct, forty-two thousand, Bank First held.
And we owe four hundred and sixty.
They kept that up there, but it went toward the four hundred and sixty.
Yeah, it was a five hundred thousand dollar loan. The debt service on it was four sixty-one because they had, I guess, they had held forty-two thousand.
It was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan. They had... There was only a hundred and eight thousand ever drawn by the county, but they held that forty-two thousand. You just explained it well enough and then it accrued interest up to sixty thousand, I think.
Yeah, sixty thousand, three thirty-six, forty-six.
So... And then all that was put toward the final, I think, the... There was some sort of a fee that run it up to...
Yes, that's much the four sixty-one because they charge fees.
From the four fifty to four sixty-one.
Mm-hmm.
But that money that was never sent was held up there and drew interest and it went toward the payoff.
Still don't make sense that it's four hundred and sixty when we never even borrowed the four hundred and eight.
The paperwork that they had sent me listed five hundred thousand.
Wrong.
Okay.
I don't think we ever talked about five hundred thousand.
Here's what Bank First had sent me as the debt service breakdown. And here is... So originally, it was four hundred and fifty thousand because this was just a five-year audit from arbitrage. Was four fifty. And then with the debt, with the fees that they charged, it made it four sixty-one. Y'all didn't draw it all, but they did help hold the forty-two thousand that's at the top, which is why we owe three eighty-nine.
I thought you said the loan was five hundred.
It was, when she sent me the thing on five hundred thousand, but here is your thing. It's four fifty. So the five hundred thousand that she was on, maybe that was what the original paperwork was. But this is what actually was drawn, was the four fifty because here's your rebate calculation, your five-year calculation that they done December eleventh of twenty nineteen.
The loan was four fifty and we drew four oh eight.
Okay.
Out, and I don't know where the...
Which would be the forty-two.
Up to five hundred then.
The four fifty, that'd be the forty-two that kicked up. Would that make you four fifty? But five hundred, I don't understand anything.
Never drew the forty-two out. It's been there since.
Well, and they don't have that on there and I'm... I could be misspeaking on that as far as seeing the five hundred um, because this clearly says it was four fifty. So maybe I'm just misspeaking and I'm confusing it with something else she was telling me.
They never sent the forty-two, but they held it up there and I forget what they called it and it drew interest.
Yes, which is where they...
And it accrued up to sixty thousand.
Yeah, the sixty.
But they used it to pay the loan.
Mm-hmm.
So we drew down four oh eight. That's what we drew down and that kicked your forty-two up into that whatever.
And the full debt service with all of their fees. Because they did not, like, they didn't take the forty-two and pay it back against it. It's up there drawing interest, but you still owe the full amount, is what she was saying.
Hundred thousand for the interest.
Yeah, so it's four sixty-one, eight twelve fifty with all of their fees.
But we paid the interest.
Interest and fees. Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, still it's good to get it paid for.
I still don't understand where that extra... Fifty-two thousand or whatever it is, extra charges is from four oh eight to four sixty. Because the interest should've been paid up on it ever.
Yeah, that's how it drew. That's how it accrued from forty-two to sixty because it was drawing that five point two five that we was paying.
We was paying the interest all the time. I don't know how they got...
Where'd they get?
Hundred thousand dollars worth of fees on top of that.
Mm-hmm.
Ah, the fees.
Because they wouldn't let us pay it off early. It made us wait till the end.
Fees was like eleven thousand, weren't they?
Uh, two thousand ninety-three, seventy-five a month is what y'all's been paying in fees. Interest and fees.
Yeah, but we...
Which is twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
What are the fees? I guess I'll get it.
Yeah, I... And then plus they charge hundred and twenty-five a month. I'm not real sure what your... What Bank First, the fees and things or how this was set up. Let me look and see if there's anything that tells me through this original.
The four fifty and the twelve about what the payoff.
Let me let you look at that. Yeah. So... Um, about twenty-five, hundred percent rebate on installment payments. This should have the breakdown here of as you drew it, what you drew, how they come up with it, what was paid. Um, I'll let you look at this because, again, I didn't have anything on all of that from previous. It may make a lot more sense to you. Because at this one, it says that they had drawn four oh eight, three ninety-five, fifty-three. And then what the bond payment value was of that four oh eight, they have calculated it four eleven, four ninety-one, sixty. I'll let you look at that and maybe that'll... Um...
What I thought.
And from what I...
They had whatever they wanted.
And the way I understand it from Ms. Jefferson there at Bank First, nothing that you have paid so far has actually went to the note. A bond issue isn't that way. So it's not like a loan that you're paying the interest down.
Right.
The bond issue is just what the bond issue is, which is the reason on this next thing that we're gonna get into is the arbitrage.
Do we haven't been paying the interest on it?
Bank First has it.
I might be wrong.
Oh, yeah, we've been paying it first.
Bank First has it, but it isn't like a loan that you get credit that, oh, you've paid the interest, so it pays it down. They hold all that money to the end and it is a one-time lump. They pay the bond off to the federal government.
They're holding that interest.
They're holding the whole thing. So whatever you took, whether you took it all, you took a little, you owe the same amount for whatever your bond issue was. That's how the bond works because that's federal government.
Yeah, but this wasn't a bond. This was a junior note attached to the bond.
Okay, because they have it as a bond issue. That's why we're having to do the whole arbitrage.
Well, no, but it was, like you said, it was attached to the law. So that left us with how much, Holly, and that will leave us after you withdraw this hundred thousand dollars?
There'll be about a hundred and thirty-four thou... A hundred and thirty-three thousand plus interest.
So we're gonna have a hundred and thirty-three thousand left over of the money we set back to pay off fees?
Yes. I can contact her and ask for some more clarification on y'all's original setup if y'all, if you don't think that it was a bond or how it was specifically set up. The only issue we're gonna come into is we're kind of at a time crunch.
How many we're gonna have hundred and thirty thousand left when we put back just enough to pay the bond? I mean, pay it off?
I... The collections that we received this year that, from the ballot issue, go into the gross revenue bond every month.
So you're paying it all out of another fund instead of the money we saved?
No, it's the ballot. I... Well, I guess it was the ballot issue.
It's some... It's accumulating some excess on regular jail payment over the half season.
Yeah.
So what I'm getting at, they put the four hundred and eight. Wasn't it four hundred and eight we put in a bank? To pay it? It's good sitting there on hold all this time?
It's just... There's some interest.
Uh-huh.
So it's a hundred and thirty-three thousand worth of interest?
No. Because there's some extra in there over that bond thing.
There's extra. So when that bond comes due in August, it'll mature August the fourteenth, and when we either draw it out, whatever y'all decide, if y'all wanna draw it out or if you just want to pull it out and put it in that gross revenue bond account. But that's where it will belong because it is junior lien money.
Yeah.
So that money is still there. It's just, it hasn't matured yet and so instead of taking the full penalty...
I understand that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that is a good question. So when it does mature in August, then it does need to go into gross revenue bond to replace the collections.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So you're taking it out of another fund to pay it now and then so...
Out of the half... I guess you'd say out of the half.
Out of the half-sand ballot measure.
The half season.
It is from the ballot measure, yes.
And we will either, I guess, look at it about either put... Either leaving it in a CD if we don't feel like we need it right then or then putting it back in the bond account.
Yes, depending on collections.
That's... It's not paid off till thirty-one. I find two thousand thirty-one, but jail, this is just a junior loan.
Yes, and the actual...
That they borrowed my payments with that.
The actual jail, that's why it's very important for that money to go back in that gross revenue bond. The actual jail payoff and the ballot measure do not end at the same time. The ballot measure for the additional money is gonna end ten months before the actual jail payoff. So if the jail is not fully paying their own way at that point, there is gonna be about three hundred thousand dollar...
Have you asked her about that reserve fund? There was like a five hundred and something thousand dollar reserve fund and I thought that was kind of the... The point of it was to cover that gap.
What res... I'm not really...
You just have to... I don't know who we're dealing with up there. It used to be Tammy Angles, but I don't know.
Oh, at Bank First?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, they have not mentioned they have a reserve fund.
You might have.
And maybe that's...
Might ask her about that and see if that's a...
Okay.
So you're saying there'll be a ten-month that overlapped or there's...
Once in twenty thirty-one.
When the bond runs or the collections.
The ballot issue ends, I believe. I don't have it right here with me, but I believe it is March and then the jail pays off in September or October.
That might be a good idea to look at putting that back in the CD.
Yeah, it may be in February.
In that care's act.
There is a ten-month, I know, and it may be February to October, but there's a ten-month span.
There won't be any collections attributed to it.
There will not be any collections attributed to it.
But, I mean, that's twenty thirty-one.
Yes, that is twenty thirty-one.
But, I mean, we don't need to not let it sneak up on us.
Keep in your mind, yes.
Be prepared.
Yes, be prepared. Be prepared.
We need to get this hundred and thirty thousand to make us some money then. Instead of spending it.
And, if collections hold, last month was the first month, collections were not enough to pay the full payment, just since I have started.
So what, how much was the shortfall, do you remember?
Right at four thousand.
That's the first time we've had shortfall in a while.
And February collections were forty-three thousand, and the full payment with both loans are right at forty-seven.
All right, I remember fourteen discussed considering hiring arbitrage compliance, faceless for final rebate, got license.
Did y'all vote to, that I can remove the hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Arbitrage is basically the difference in buying and selling on bonds, it's the refund you get, so it, because a bond is federal. They want you to draw interest, but if you make more interest than your fees, then you have to pay a percentage to the government. This was y'all's five-year bond plan, the one that, uh, right here. Um, once it's paid off, you have to do a final, a final rebate, to see. When they did this one, interest rates were low, so you didn't owe any arbitrage back to the government. Interest rates are higher now, he, you're most likely gonna owe a little bit of arbitrage, which means you made more money than you paid in fees. The government wants their percentage. Without calling it a tax. And so, um, I had a list of companies that do these, uh, finals and all that, and we could've, that Bank First sent me, we could've went with any of these. The only issue and the reason I went with the same one you used at five-year, they start from fresh. So it costs more to go with a company that didn't do your five-year calculation, because they go all the way back to the inception, and they do their own calculations. So, you paid approximately four thousand dollars for this five-year report, it's gonna cost a thousand dollars. That's the contract, um, that I gave Randy for y'all to look at and sign. Right there, it's gonna cost a thousand dollars for our final computations, and then whatever we owe in arbitrage, they'll let us know.
Sounds like this is the cheapest possible.
It's gonna be the cheapest way forward.
Art McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Okay, item fifteen, review, sign, and approve. Appropriations, transfer appropriations, check received, bill approved.
Make a motion to approve.
Art McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Read that.
Yes.
That's your number three.
They're building. Reimbursement for your lecture.
No, it's the heating. For your rate print in the shop.